Will the Committee of the Whole Finance for Wadsworth City Council Tuesday, November 19th, 2024 at 6:00 PM, please come to order. Will the clerk please take the roll call?
Copley?
Here.
Hanlon?
Here.
Hines?
Here.
Parrish?
Here.
Stockmeyer?
Here.
Rosper?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Yurchev?
Here.
You've all had a chance to review the minutes from the Committee of the Whole Finance meeting of November 6th, 2024. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign?
Nothing.
Okay. Motion carries. The first item tonight on the Committee of the Whole is a resolution for services for 61.44 acres on Hartman Road, annexation type 2. Who would like to speak to that?
I could speak on it, Councilor or Council President. As this is the advance property that we've been talking about, this is filed for annexation on November 4th, so we have a statutory obligation to advise as to the resolution of services by November 20th. This is our only opportunity to do that in regular session. This is identical to the resolution of services you've already passed for the prior time this came up for annexation. Just so you, as Committee as a whole can hear, I have prepared a pre-annexation agreement. I'm going to present that tomorrow to the ED&amp;P for comments, and then I'll certainly give a copy to everybody here so that they'll have a chance to review it as well. Once again, this is the, pursuant to the Rule 23 that we adopted earlier, this is just the resolution of services. If there's additional information you need, we'll still flow it through Committee, but this needs passed immediately if possible so that we can comply with the statutory obligation.
Okay. And the timeline on that is 60 days, I believe?
20 days.
20 days.
So, November 20th is the due date for it.
Okay. Very good. Questions? Comments from Council? Mary Nine, Mr. Yurchev, that's under your committee. You take that, please.
Yep.
The number?
Will be resolution number 24-12. 12.
12.
12.
12.
What?
12.
We couldn't hear what was it?
12.
Okay.
Just 12.
Okay.
Okay. The next one is a ordinance, and it's about compensation for the Deputy Treasurer, and that will start with the 2026 calendar year. That'd be the next term of that particular.
Are you ready for questions?
Yeah.
So, one is, and this might just be something I don't understand, the ordinance language just refers to the deputy city treasurer, the, you know, but then in the actual document, it refers to the salary of the treasurer, and then it also refers to the, a one deputy treasurer.
Okay. Mr. Proudfoot, would you like to address that? You did the legislation.
I believe that this is similar, the titling of it, as to the, sorry. I believe it's similar, the titling of it, to what the Law Director's Office had as well. I believe that one, the adjustment there was made, and it simply addressed, I believe it was Assistant Law Director, but as to the titling of it and why it just said Deputy City Treasurer, I'm not 100% aware. Has it always been like that?
Yep. Typically, these are just copied and pasted from the previous ones, but this does adjust the treasurer itself as well.
So, it doesn't have to say it in what we're going to read? It's just what's in the.
It should say what it's, what it's going to read.
And then I, and then I also, so I'm just, it's a, it's actually a, a big cut in 2026 in, like, by two-thirds. I was interested, I just would like to know the rationale for that.
Oh, absolutely. So, two years ago, there were some comment about Council setting wages for their own, wages for the next term. Okay. So, what we did, we got an independent group to look at wages, not only for Council, but Treasurer, and if you'd like to know the names, I'll be happy to provide them. But I'll just tell you, it was former Mayor Jim Renace, former Councilman Craig Hassinger, former Councilman Bruce Darlington, and then a business leader, Ron Pato. And they met, and with the same documents that you see as far as wages in the community, Ms. McCullough was able to get statutory city treasurer wages, and that's what they used to base that. And that's what they determined that that should be cut back.
So, with such a big difference, I also, you know, would like to know how it ever got that out of lack, and also, have we confirmed that the jobs are the same, that the duties are the same, and the amount of time spent on the job is?
It's a part-time job. Is that correct in saying that?
It is a part-time job. I do know that she's in the office every day. She actually has an office every day.
Yeah.
Or she has an office to come to every day.
So, they were, they were provided those facts.
I, I, still, I guess I'd like to know the history of how it.
How it got that far? That's a good question.
Well, I, I'm.
And how long has it been like that?
Yeah.
This has been adjusted, and I've been here for about six and a half years, and this has been adjusted multiple, well, every time the ordinance has been updated. It has been with the, I guess with the thought in mind of the current treasurer and the job that she had been doing, just really doing a fantastic job in investing for the city, you know, and it pays for itself with her investments. The previous Council President had made those adjustments.
So, I think in something like this, probably it shouldn't be based on the person, it should be based on the.
It's the office.
Position. It should be based on the position, I would say, in general.
Is the position, could Mrs. Fitz speak to that? Is the position different? Do you know? You probably don't know what other places do.
I did speak briefly with the treasurer, and I believe she spends three to four hours a day in the office. I guess I'm a little concerned that the auditor's going to have to pick up part of those responsibilities, so maybe we should look at the job description, what she's doing versus other positions. That's, I just wonder if that was looked at.
So, do you think we should look at a job description before we make a decision like this?
I would suggest speaking with this directly, because we don't have job descriptions, per se, for elected.
Oh, it's like city funds.
Right. Before elected positions.
So, the requirements of the treasurer is to be 18 years of age, a registered voter in Wadsworth, and get elected. I mean, there's no actual qualifications to be a treasurer.
Right. But then what are they supposed to do? I mean, I'll be honest, I'm not sure I know exactly what the treasurer does on the daily.
Well, they are responsible for investing the funds of the city, and we, a few months ago, had $70 million. There is a lot of responsibility, and I think I would be concerned that we get someone who isn't qualified. Those same qualifications are described for the auditor's position, and I, hopefully, you know, you could find someone with better qualifications. I guess I'm a little concerned that the quality of the skill set may not be there. I mean, that's the minimum qualifications. Of course, we want more because of the responsibility, so that's, I guess that's.
But addressing the, you know, investments, that's all done with a company or someone in Columbus. Same as the county treasurer does the same thing, you know, but again, the position, you have to be 18 years of old.
Yes.
A registered voter.
Yes.
And win an election.
She does, she is responsible.
But we're not talking about our current one, we're just talking about the.
Right. The position.
Yes.
And there is a great discrepancy.
Right.
Between what we're paying and what all these other communities are paying, and some of these are much bigger communities.
Right. That's what I'm just curious if I.
It got elevated somewhere.
There has to be a reason.
Oh, it got that high.
I, I haven't seen those, but comparatively, our budget and our cash balances are quite large for our population because of the services that we provide, so I wasn't involved, so I can't.
As an example, you know, and I'll just say it because it's there, you know, Wadsworth, we're paying our treasurer $35,884,000. Maslin, which is probably five or six times our size, are paying their treasurer $15,000 a year.
Hmm.
So, I agree with you, you know, there is a discrepancy.
Yeah.
And, and the formula they use, they took the highest and the lowest and threw it out, and I think that was a good way to do it, and then averaged it out, and then rounded it up. It came close to what Council's making, and Council has nothing to do with it, but, you know, that was their rationale. And that's why you had somebody outside of Council do this, so it takes that off of us. Okay? And that's what their recommendation. Any other questions from Council members?
Is there a way we can get this history? Does anybody have that knowledge?
What's that?
Does anybody have that history or knowledge?
History of what?
History of the pay scale, how it got out of.
No. You have to go back to, probably Mr. Bray could maybe tell you how it progressed, but I don't think, you know, what we're dealing with is today, and that'll deal with the next treasurer. That's, that's the question. I don't think there's a more fair way to do this than to have an outside person take a look at our pay schedule. Any other questions or comments?
Never mind.
It's, it's hard to believe that we're dropping a salary by that much.
Yeah.
Without understanding why we're doing.
Two-thirds.
So, without understanding what the roles and responsibilities are and what everyone thinks, I mean, that is significant. It's, I mean, we're, that's crazy. It just, so if we don't understand why we're at 35,884, I can't sit here and understand why we would be going to, what's the number, 11 or 12?
11 something.
11, 670, without understanding all the facts, because the, whoever looked at the salaries grabbed salaries they found online, threw out the highest and lowest, averaged it out, but there's no discussion of what the job responsibilities are or what the position, the position for Wadsworth could be different than the position someone's doing for Maslin.
We're looking at treasurer salaries, and they actually were, that's why I had prior Council members that were aware and knew probably better than anybody because of the history. You go back into the 90s when they served.
So, then they should be giving us that information.
Yeah, I'd like to hear that.
There's no rationale for why we're cutting a salary by two-thirds, other than what other communities pay. I mean.
I agree.
I don't, I just don't understand it.
We do a lot of things differently than other communities.
I mean, I don't know how there's enough information to make this.
All right. So, Council, what do you want to do?
I, I would like to table this or whatever until we can get more information.
That's one voice.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, there's got to be more rationale. I mean, I would not.
I'd just like to see why it got that high. Just, it's just a radical cut.
It's not a radical cut. You know?
Two-thirds.
Okay. How it got that high probably is more radical than anything.
Right.
Okay. But if we don't understand.
But we don't know if it was radical or if it was rational.
So, do we have history, Ms. McCullough?
Other, Council minutes, Committee minutes, that would be the only history. This has never been anything that's been determined or recommended by administration. It's always been, in my time, a conversation that I've had with the Council President, and it's been approved by Council. I mean, that's the extent of the information that I have.
Right. I would think we could at least pinpoint, you know, I mean, we know what it was, you know what it was for the last, what'd you say, four or five years?
I can pull those ordinances, sure.
Yeah, we could see that, and then, Mr. Williams, if your Committee members have some other information, just summarize that in a paragraph and let us know.
We'll, we'll get more information, so I think we should table this and not put it on the agenda tonight.
I agree.
Get more information. What else would you like, Ms. McCullough, to get you?
I guess just have the actual dates of, of what it was to go back to when you see that it got to this point. You know what I'm saying?
Sure.
I would think just the ordinances would show that path.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That one will take off, or we'll put it on. So then the next one is the wages for Council. Any questions on that? If you want to know the rationale behind that, I'd be glad to give it to you. They, and I didn't have anything to do with this Committee, it's just all I did was put them together. That recommendation was based on the cost of living for, you know, not seniors, but just, you know, inflation, which they figured was 2.7% for last year, and they rounded that up to 3%, and that's what they recommended for Council. Any questions there? Want to move that one forward?
Can we, can we possibly vote on the clerk separate from the Council and Council President? Would that be possible?
Mr. Proudfoot.
Well, I mean, the.
It's possible. Do you have a question on why we should do that?
I just want to know if that is possible, if we can do that, if we can vote separately on those, because I wanted to separate those two, if I could.
Why?
Council and Council President.
What's your rationale there?
Because may, I might not be in favor of one, but in favor of the other.
Well, I, I think that you possibly could do that. They're both a, they're both amending the same section of our local ordinance, though is the problem, 35.31 of the local ordinance, so you would be voting to amend it in two different ways and two different times, so I think that's generally.
How about just voting? Are we able to vote separately? Separate section C from A and B?
Well, not the way it's presented this evening.
Okay.
It's presented as one, you know, one ordinance in and of itself, so you would have to vote on the ordinance as a whole this evening, so.
So, Councilmember Parrish, I would suggest, you know, if everybody else is in favor to move that forward, then you just exercise your vote.
Yes.
Okay. Keep it simple. Okay. Yeah, we'll give that to you, Ms. Hines.
And that'll be ordinance number 24-175.
All right.
Want me to move that to second?
175.
Yeah, wage ordinance, we need two, three reads.
So, that moves us to the regular agenda for tonight. We have ordinance number 24-158. Mr. Rosper, what would you like to do there?
We'll go ahead and move that to third, unless there's any special reason we need to do that immediately tonight.
Okay. Ordinance number 24-160, Ms. Hanlon.
Third.
Okay. Ordinance 24-163. And again, it's Councilmember Hanlon. Third. Ms. Councilmember Hines, 24-164.
Third.
And we have ordinance number 24-165.
Third.
Ordinance number 24-166. Councilmember Parrish.
Third.
And ordinance 24-167, and there's a motion to amend that. That's Councilmember Hanlon. Would you like to address that, Mr. Proudfoot?
Yeah. This question was brought up, I believe, by you, Mr. Williams, and a couple other Council members, as to the compensation for the Assistant Law Director. I believe that all of you received a copy of an email that I had sent to HR, I believe it was back in May, and I just illustrated a few of the known cities and what they were compensating their, their Assistant Law Directors at, and as you can see, it was, at times, less than 50% of what some of these cities were paying their Assistant Law Directors. So, that was my justification for that, and as you can see, the amendment there, I believe that Julie had given you a copy of it, so that would place the salary at $80,000 and then a 4% increase for the following year. And if you want any other information regarding that, I'm more than happy to answer any other questions.
Now's the time for questions.
I think it's fair, after I looked at the information that you sent and everything, I mean, I don't know how the guy can get high.
I concur. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Hanlon.
Amend and then move to third.
Okay. Then we have another one. Councilmember Parrish.
Yes, 24-168. I'm going to move to amend that and then suspend and call, because we're under time crunch for that. In fact, when the original was brought to us, we had that discussion that night, and they asked us to go no more than two readings, so this will be the second reading, and this only benefits the employees. This is, we don't want it to penalize them in any way. We want to make sure that they get their raises.
Any comments from our Law Director?
You know, the amendment itself was a, we had this discussion last time. It was 4%, and then there was the 1% with a merit-based promotion, or a merit-based raise, and this amendment, what it does is it gives everyone that's eligible for this ordinance a 5% raise, so that's, that's the big change there.
Okay. All right. Suspend and call that one.
Yes.
24-169. Councilmember Yurchev?
Third.
And the next one as well, 24-170.
Third.
And 24-171.
Third.
Final one, 24-172.
Third.
And then I have one quick question on ordinance number 24-163. Ms. McCullough, when is the employee, the annual employee recognition launched? What's the date on that?
Oh, gosh.
There was an email.
Let me look.
Somewhere in there.
December 13th, I think.
Yeah.
It's the, it's usually on a Tuesday, it's the Thursday this year.
So, if we don't, if we don't pass that until the first meeting in December, is that?
We really need that passed so we can get the PO and get these ordered.
Oh, you want me to, should, I should suspend that?
I'm sorry, I lost track. Yes, suspend and call, if you can, please.
All right. Very good catch.
Thank you.
It's the 12th.
All right. Anything else for Administration?
Yes? Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to request Council's consideration of the 2025 budget ordinance. We had it on our Committee of the Whole agenda for our last meeting, and I know we pulled that off, but we're getting toward the end of the year, and we typically read that a few different times, so folks have an opportunity to weigh in on that, and just, we're running out of year, so I would request Council's consideration of just placing it on the normal agenda.
It'll be on the next agenda. I mean, we're, there's still a lot to be discussed, and if it takes extra meetings, we'll do extra meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Anything from Council? Will entertain a motion?
So.
Wait a minute. With the regular meeting of Wadsworth City Council for Tuesday, November 19th, 2024, please come to order. Will you please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag and remain standing for the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty God, who has given us this good land to be our heritage, we acknowledge our dependence upon you in all things, and we thank you for all your blessings, including the right and privilege to govern ourselves in this free land. We pray that you would grant us all wisdom to make good decisions for the future of this community. Through Christ our Lord, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Copley?
Here.
Hanlon?
Here.
Hines?
Here.
Parrish?
Here.
Stockmeyer?
Here.
Rosper?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Yurchev?
Here.
You've all had the opportunity to review the minutes of our regular City Council meeting for November 6th, 2024. May I have a motion to approve them?
I'll make that next motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Seeing that there's quite a few visitors in the audience, we're going to start in order, with the exception, and I'm going to have Mr. Hill come, because he has to attend another meeting after this. Please state your name and address, and I'll give you about three minutes.
And, Mr. President, if I could speak after?
Right after, yeah. Yep.
Thank you, President Williams. I'm Andy Hill, Superintendent of the Wadsworth City Schools. Wanted to take just a moment tonight to tell you, Council, and to thank you, Mayor, Safety Director Hiscock, and others, for the partnership that we have, not only with all of you here in the city, but in particular with your safety forces. We've gone through some threat-type situations this year that have been pretty severe and serious, and it's not lost on us how fortunate we are as a school system to be able to have the support that we do from not only the Police Department, but also the EMS, Fire Department as well. We're able to collaborate together. We know that they're there to work with us. You've made a lot of that happen by continuing that memorandum of understanding with us for the School Resource Officer Program that's been in place officially since 2013, but also believe in a trial year, 2012, in some manner. You know, we're just very fortunate and appreciative of Chief Chafin, Director Hiscock, Nate Ball, and Ben Smith, our Resource Officers, Adam Nisente, Dan Schonk, our Resource Officers Emeritus, I guess is what we would call them, who are regularly back helping us out time and time again. Sergeant Haas, and I could go on and on with the list. Not only are they there to help us in moments of need, 24/7, literally 24/7, but they're also willing and asking to sit down and debrief with us, to help us go through situations and make suggestions about how things can be better and safer for everybody involved in our schools. So, I just wanted to take a moment, we tell our families this all the time when we have to put out messages in regards to different situations, and I thought it was important that you have an opportunity to hear that, too. So, thank you for giving me a couple minutes.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Appreciate it.
All right. Very well. Next, I have Mayor Robin Law, please.
Thank you.
You want to come to the podium?
No, no, I'll just sit here.
No?
Thank you so much. We have a roomful of individuals here, and I just wanted to take a few moments, because I know that, I'm going to guess, the great majority of you here are here concerning the Hane property and the questions concerning water. Because of the misunderstanding, I wanted to just say a few words, and I have it here, I'm going to read it, to make sure that everybody has the right information, because, as I said, that there's quite a bit of misinformation out there. And I just basically state, I want to address some misinformation regarding a city ordinance and provide some clarification. Some time ago, a policy which was later codified in an ordinance was implemented that required properties to be annexed into the city in order to receive city water services, and that's actually Section 54.16. As mayor, I do not have the authority to allow properties outside the city to access city water. This ordinance was established to ensure fairness, proper community development, and efficiency in delivering services. When a property receives all the city benefits and all the city services, it's essential that it also contributes to the community through annexation, and this includes paying Without this policy, property owners could receive full city services without contributing, while their neighbors across the street actually do. If the services, if all the services were given, there would be no incentive for the property to ever come into the city, eventually resulting in an island of township that would be surrounded by city. And that creates a difficult, it's difficulty for delivery of services, as well as inequality of paying income tax. Decades ago, this occurred, and there are some small pockets in the city that this has actually occurred. To address such inequalities, the ordinance was put in place to require annexation to annex water services. A recent example of this is the Hayne Farm. Like many of you, I admire the beauty of the property, and I enjoy seeing it when I pass by. I live nearby, and I see it often. And I really do love it, and I hope that it stays a farm for a long, long time. While keeping of farm animals is, excuse me, if the Hayne Farm were to request, this would be from them, if they were to request to be annexed into the city, it could remain as it is today. While keeping of farm animals is generally prohibited, Section 90.19 of the city ordinances state properties with more than five contiguous acres of land is valid for keeping of livestock. The property in question contains over 85 acres, and provided it's not subdivided into lots, and that would be something that would be the property owner would look to do, as long as it's not subdivided into lots of less than five acres, the keeping of farm animals would be allowed by law. There is already an example of a property within the city enjoying this benefit. In my discussions with Mr. Hayne, he expressed that he did not want to wish, he did not wish to annex the property, obviously due to the income tax. And I encouraged him to consult a professional to drill and to drill an additional well on his land, as that would allow him to maintain independence from city water services and without requiring any sort of annexation. While I empathize with his position, providing water without annexation would be unfair to other residents who pay taxes and follow this policy, as well as to future developers and individuals who wish to annex. There was question as far as services north of the city, as far as water is concerned. So in regards to Medina County, for decades, the city has provided a bulk water meter at the north city limit line for their use. Medina County operates their own water system and does its own billing and uses outside of the city limits. And the county uses water from the city's bulk meter to serve some of its customers. The new developments that are in Sharon Center, in Sharon Township, are served by the county's water service. In summary, new developments outside city limits in Sharon Township are served by the county water system, and the county water system receives a portion of its water, which it pays for, from a bulk city water meter approved decades ago. The positive of this situation is that Mr. Hayne has several options, all of which allow him to keep his farm and his livestock just as it is today. One, he can request to annex to the city. And once again, this is what he would do. If he wants to, he can request to annex to the city to receive city water. The second thing he could do is he could request to annex an area that's contiguous to the city that, to build the house. So that's the reason why he's here, is to build a house on his property. And so, a second option would be is that he could request to annex an area that's contiguous to the city to build the house, and the other great majority of the property would remain in the township. But that house that would be built would be, as I mentioned, he would request to annex that to the city, and he would receive water there. And then lastly, he can work with professionals to determine the best place to drill a new well on his land, and then remain completely in the township. So as I mentioned, all three of those situations are options, and all three of them allow him to be able to continue farming and to continue to have the beautiful open space that he has today. I hope that this clarifies the situation a little bit and the rationale behind the policy. We certainly are interested in fairness and community growth, and those are priorities in the city.
Thank you, Mayor LaValle. Next speaker will be Ginger Hayne. Yep, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have about three minutes.
My name is Ginger Hayne, and I am one of the three owners of the Hayne family farm. My address is 1097 Jefferson Avenue. I live in Akron. But I do come to the farm periodically to do my part. Our family history in Wadsworth traces its roots back to one of the 13 founding families. Also, the main farmhouse stands in the same location where the Silvia Beach family lived, the same Silvia Beach who in 1824 fortunately, unfortunately, lost her, got lost in the woods, and in spite of many days of searching, was never found. There's a marker in Woodland Cemetery that tells of this. My nephew Michael and his wife Elizabeth had one goal in mind when they both graduated in engineering from Ohio State in 2012. They wanted to find employment as closely as possible so they could work and raise a family on the family farm. They succeeded in finding employment and bought a house close by, and when they went to start their family, instead of starting out with one child, they hit the triple whammy and ended up with triplets. At this point, they are rapidly running out of room and would like to fulfill their dream of building a house on the farm and raising their kids there. They are already quite involved with the farm. Michael has bees, and he recently raised some beef cattle and pigs. Elizabeth has her chickens in a really large garden along with tending to the orchard where we were rewarded with many apples this fall. Unfortunately, water is a limited source on the farm. There's a shallow spring which supplies the main house with water. It has run dangerously low at times when there has been a serious lack of rain, and no way it could provide adequate water to an additional house. As recently as last week when I was there, I was asked not to use any water unless it was really necessary. There is also a deep well on the farm that has been depleted by just filling a 100-gallon sprayer tank for the crops my brother has planted. It does replenish, but it's slow. All this is a bit ironic, as my brother Jim has been awarded twice Conservation Steward of the Year from the Medina County Soil and Water Conservation District. I'd like to point out that our family has contributed to Wadsworth in many ways over the years. We've allowed our good neighbors along the fence line to plant their gardens on us, and for many years, my father allowed a portion of our upper field to be used as a baseball field. We've also recently donated two tenths of an acre behind our woods for the extension of Park Center Drive. But most I think it's very important to note that there are Wadsworth city lines surrounding the farm. That's due to the fact that we cooperated with the city years ago and allowed Wadsworth city water and sewer lines to pass through our farm to service the condos to the east of us. The city is insisting we annex the farm into the Wadsworth city to receive Wadsworth water. For decades, the city and developers have enticed us to annex into the city. I think most people realize that when a farm is annexed into the city, the chance of remaining on the farm is not very good. So, all we are asking is access to city water so Michael and Elizabeth can build their home on the property and raise their family there. It's been passed on from my grandfather, who moved there in 1923, to my father, to my brothers and I, and we are hoping to pass it along to a fourth generation and hopefully a fifth. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is Elizabeth. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. So Elizabeth Hayne, 432 Meadow Creek Drive. Good evening. I'm here tonight with my husband, representing the future fourth generation of farm owners with over 100 years of working and maintaining the preservation of this property. Unfortunately, our fifth-generation triplet children were unable to join us this late into the night. My father-in-law is also here, and we will talk later. Although we now see eye to eye on how best to approach this issue, we do share a common love for each other and our kids, as well as a common goal of trying to get access to the most vital resource our children and farm can have, water. Our goal is to work with the city and community to provide an honest and factual petition to help our neighbors better understand the unique and singular position this farm is in, and how you can help it endure. My husband and I plan to spend our life savings to build a house on this property. We are doing so not only for the continuation of our family heritage, but also to instill in our children a love and respect for nature, to give them all the opportunities of learning what a farm has to offer, ability work ethic not only important for their lives, but necessary for continuation of this property, and to understand the importance of sharing with the local community. Recently, my father-in-law approached the mayor of the consideration of city water support for their plans to build a home on the property. Her response surrounded the necessity for any township resident to annex into the city. This is done so that a 1.4% city income tax payment can help the support of infrastructure necessary to supply this utility. I hope to discuss how serious annexation is for this farm, and how unique of a situation our necessity for reliable and clean water has and will continue to become. Arguably, more so than any other township resident has ever had to face. Let's talk about city annexation for the farm first. With annexation of this property, city zoning codes can prohibit or limit agricultural uses. Restrictions from odor complaints for livestock, the inability to control rodent or deer populations with firearm use, and noise complaints from machinery use on the farm are just a few examples. Rezoning will lead to higher tax rates for services we do not persist to pay in or need to, as well as opening the door for easier access for developers. Throughout the generations, not only has it become harder to financially sustain this property as a farm, but annexation in the city will make it impossibly difficult to fight off developers. The zoning and land use restriction is a gateway for limiting or prohibiting the use of the property for farming. As it happens, less sand will fall under agricultural CAUV use, in turn driving up our taxes, ultimately opening the door for unsustainable financial loss. This is not a reasonable or even realistic option for any farm, which is why we all avoid this fate. Out of the community, I would like to address what I perceive as the best counter argument to a city's water tap for a property, the blatant statement from a township resident of just pay for a well like the rest of us. For simplistic statements, allow us to make this one. We are not a typical two-acre township house 50 feet off a main road that drills a single well for a couple showers, some toilets, a refrigerator, and an outside hose to water our only major property upgrade, the mowing of a lawn. I'm going to pause here. My husband is actually going to continue on our thought process.
He's the next speaker?
He is the next speaker, yes. Thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
How old did I do on my time? Did I kept reading?
You got a few.
You want me to keep going?
Well, now with the pause, you're about to...
Pause with you.
Yeah, you heard some time, so, thanks. You were doing well. All right, the next speaker, Michael Hayne.
Michael Hayne, 432 Meadow Creek Drive. In continuation from where she left off, the Hayne family farm currently manages multiple wells and two springs to supply water to a house, cattle and hog pastures, night pastures, overwintering barns, as well as clean water supply for honeybees. We transport totes of water with tractors for fruit trees and gardens during droughts, not including hand transport for chickens and other animals. In recent years, our springs have started to run dry, and we have had no overflow this year. We already drilled our wells deeper to maintain limited water access in other areas. The water we do have in some of those areas are problematic and take a substantial amount of post-treatment even for livestock. This is just a small example of the massive amount of infrastructure needed to access only a single utility on this farm, let alone all other costs associated with maintaining the land. I want to be clear, we do not expect a city water tap with over 1,000 feet of trenching and pipe, as well as the continued monthly water bill to be easier or cheaper than drilling a well. We do, however, find it necessary for the future sustainment of this land. Finally, I want to talk briefly about the lack of city infrastructure support, because we don't pay a 1.4% city income tax. Highway 76 runs right through our farm, which we pay property taxes to, and also maintain the woods and fields along the fence line for thousands of people to commute through every day. We manage a substantial amount of water runoff during heavy rains from the Eastview neighborhood, which sometimes the city stormwater system is unable to accommodate. Within the same field that local children play, neighbors grow backyard gardens in, and residents walk dogs, we have built and maintained a local stormwater drainage system, a large stormwater drainage system. This field can be seen completely flooded during heavy rains. This containment not only helps prevent soil runoff and washout into Briarthorn, but also the flooding of Eastview Neighborhood basements, which has happened in the past. This makes the land too wet for crop use, but we continue to maintain it in support of our local neighbors and as good sustainable land stewards. Along the same runoff path, city sewer and water flow directly through our farm and around. These utilities protected under the easement land that runs through our property service the residents of Briarthorn. Many times, we have accommodated the repair, maintenance, improvement, and access to this land as responsible stewards of the easement, albeit at a loss of crop land and profit. We understand that our farm supports many services in which we do not participate. Additionally, our family has had the privilege to enable local 4H kids and families without the property, equipment, and means to raise and board horses in our barns and ride in our fields, many of which you have seen as you drive by. Just last year, my wife and I had the opportunity to jointly raise cattle with 4H members to supply food and education for our family, theirs, and other residents. We have supplied local honey, maple syrup, fruit, sweet corn, pasture-raised beef and pork at less than our expense costs. We have donated our harvest every year to local community children, school lunches, and families who are less fortunate than ourselves. One more paragraph.
I'll allow that.
In closing, this family has done our best to sustain, with immense amount of work and financial care, the farm many of you in this room have grown to love and enjoy. We have shared much more than any city income tax, year after year, throughout a century of ownership. My wife and I, being the next generation to support this 85-acre farm, with all the expenses and time necessary, while raising triplets and working full-time jobs, will continue to do so to the best of our ability. We humbly request, with our unique and difficult progressing situation, your opportunity to help support and preserve this agricultural land, just as we have done, a simple city water tap, which I hope you now understand can make a profound difference for our family, this farm, and the next generation to come.
Thank you, Mr. Hayne. Okay. Next, I have Mr. Jim Hayne.
Hello, my name's Jim Hayne. I'm one of the owners of the Hayne farm. I would like to address my opposition to the annexation requirement as a prerequisite to supplying water to my nephew's new home. First, I'll give you some history. In the late 1970s, our farmers unwillingly included an annexation petition for the properties east of us. We were surprised and opposed at being included in this petition. Our opposition to it was noted by the Wadsworth News Banner. Can you hear me now? Wadsworth News Banner. There were a couple front-page articles, numerous letters to the editors, and some editorials opposing the annexation petition. There was a lot of public opposition to the petition that was withdrawn, and noon was submitted. This was passed and excluded our farm. This is how the Briarthorn and Bent Creek developments entered into the city. The annexation went around us, and we remained in the township. Our reasons opposing the annexation now are the same as they were then. Before we discuss the income tax, no income tax for the Wadsworth Township residents. However, there's many other reasons than taxes. The city has many regulations that would make it difficult, if not impossible, for this farm to continue as such. The most obvious one is livestock. Currently, there's only some chickens. In recent years, as you've heard, there's been pigs, cattle, horses. Most likely, they'll return, if not only as 4H projects. The city has regulations prohibiting these animals, incidentally. It's been noticed already, too. I get lots of positive feedback from the animals, people observing the animals. The other concern, another concern, is being able to consider the standard accepted farming practices, which would seem out of place in a city setting, that are necessary for the farm's operation. I currently do the farming here, and I have been recognized twice in my farming career by the Medina County Soil and Water Conservation for my stewardship practices. Another issue about our farm is that we're considering a small roadside stand, offering some of our farm's produce in the future. This venture is acceptable in the township, but it might face opposition under certain city jurisdiction. Another consideration is gun regulation. I'm a gun owner. I don't shoot very often. I usually miss the groundhog. I believe that discharge of a gun is prohibited in the city. I'm not a hunter. I believe that's prohibited in the city. We allow hunting on our property as regulated by the state, and there are several city residents currently that enjoy hunting on our farm. In summary, I believe it's in the best interest of our farm and the Wadsworth community as a whole that our farm may remain a viable farming operation, and the requirement of annexation to supply water to my nephew's home is unreasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Mr. John Hayne.
My name is John Hayne. Live at 845 Akron Road. This is the farm we're talking about right now. You've heard about the family farm history. We're here tonight seeking just a simple tap into the Wadsworth city water supply. We have Wadsworth city water supply on all four sides of our farm. We have a Wadsworth city water line running right through our farm, supplying water to the other side, as you've heard. You may have read, and you may have heard, and you actually heard tonight, about an ordinance. There's one sentence in this... There's one sentence in this ordinance which explains the position. No property outside the city shall be provided Wadsworth, should be provided water service, 10 words. This means that no Wadsworth Township, Sharon Township, or other can get Wadsworth City water. There are lots of, and Robin referred to this, there are lots of areas in Wadsworth Township and Sharon Township, residents receiving Wadsworth City water. It may be through a contract, but still Wadsworth water. I heard that there was a annex, a tap into Wadsworth City water recently. I did a lot of research, followed a lot of water hydrants, fire hydrants down the street, see where water was going, and I found a Wadsworth Township home that's receiving water starting in 2023. The ordinance was written in 2008. This is 15 years later. There's a home right on Hartman Road that's receiving Wadsworth Township water starting in 2023. I talked to the lady, she said, yes, everything you're telling me is true, you're right. It took me nine years to get city water on this property. I'm 76 years old, I don't have nine years. We need action now. I finally, to obtain Wadsworth City water, and I talked to Mayor LaBa, I pronounce this, I have a hard time with this one, and I apologize. Has told me we must annex into the city. She said that again tonight. Annexing this farm into the city is a slow death to the farm. We heard that there'd be, you know, there's say we can have livestock, there's promises of this and promises of that. We're subject to ever-evolving rerules, restrictions, ordinances. A promise, how good's a promise? Rules, ordinances, they're flexible. You can regulate and legislate us out of business, making it financially and legally impossible to maintain this farm as an attractive entrance into the city of Wadsworth. And you know what the alternative would be? The spring water supplies the homes on the farm right now. Right now, things should be running a three-inch stream out the discharge. The discharge's been dry since July. We're in a drought. Your grass may be green from a little bit of surface water, we need the long soaking rains, especially the fall rains, they're not coming either. Ground freezes, I don't know tonight if I go home, if I'll have water in the spring, because that spring is very low. We also have a well that's been spoken of, a deep well. This water, we have a $12,000 system treating this water out of this well. This is common water in the area. We have a $12,000 system treating this well. I would not offer any of you a glass of water out of that well. This is the water.
Mr. Hane, I have a timer malfunction, so I'll allow you 30 more seconds.
Okay.
I don't know where you're at here, so...
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Well, how many of the Wadsworth Township homes have received water from the city since this ordinance was written? We pay taxes and levies to the city of Wadsworth School System. People in Sharon Center receiving Wadsworth City water do not pay taxes and levies into the Wadsworth City School System, yet they receive Wadsworth City water. We talk about fairness. We're a township resident for over 100 years in this farm, and we're being denied city water. Why? Why have my son and daughter-in-law being denied city water to build a new home on the farm, when people in Sharon Township are building new homes today with Wadsworth City water? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, and I'm terrible, I can't read the writing here. It starts with an A, and I think the last name starts with a W. Anybody want to claim that? Can you read it?
I mean, I would say Amy, but...
Give me the address.
Oh, yeah, let's do that. 524?
Yeah, I can't. Pass it along, see if anybody can... Be a little help.
I'd be willing.
All right, let's...
He signed in right before Bob Garing.
All right, well, let's do this.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, the next speaker is Bob Garing, and then I'll allow anybody else in the audience if they'd like to come forward.
I live at 625 Crestwood Avenue. Similar to the Hane family, Garing's have been in Wadsworth for about 100 years. I'm a fourth generation. My children are choosing to live here, fifth generation. So we've seen a lot of, a lot of great change, most of it good, some of it's in the eyes of the beholder, I guess. I grew up in the neighborhood of the Hane Farm, very familiar with it, actually played in your fields as a kid. Sorry if that was bad. And I presently live even closer to the farm, it's within eyesight, and it's, it's a very beautiful piece of land. I've always found them to be good stewards of the land. It's well-kept, and it presents well as you enter from the east side into the city. In fact, minus the wagons, that could be the farm, right there. It's a very pretty piece of land. I appreciate the details of the ordinance. Mr. Hane knocked on our door the other day and spoke to my wife, left a piece of paper with his side of the story, and it was compelling enough for me to change my plans tonight and be here. I guess my closing remarks would be, you know, legislatures or administrators of government made the ordinance, they can change the ordinance, they can modify the ordinance, come up with some mutually agreeable solution so that the farm can remain as an active farm and not risk going the way of high-density row houses or something less attractive than it is today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garing.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. Calling again. Is that Baird? Maybe it looks like Baird. Someone that lives on Baird, perhaps? Okay, well, I'll just move on. If there's anybody that wasn't on the list but would like to speak to council on this item, please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes. Yes, sir. One at a time.
Well, this is, this is the first time I've ever been here. My name is Mike Tye. I, I own 630 at, that's T-I-G-H-E. I grew up here in Wadsworth. I saw the bulldozers make Ringer Street, so that's how old I am. 12 more years, I'll be 90. Figured that. Anyway, it's a good school, I graduated in '65. I don't have a lot to say, but I, we bought 630 at, shoot, Brentwood, you know, and I really don't wish to have a farm broken up with all little houses and have it turn into what's, we see in certain areas, like over Akron or over Medina. It becomes a big problem for the city. And us older folks that live there in those two condo areas on 261, I think that's, I don't think any of us are going to like it. So if, that has to be, have a lot of thought in it before you put little box houses over there. And I don't, I'm afraid of the kind of people that will move into it. We just, Wadsworth just doesn't deserve it and doesn't need it. My, my thoughts are, no. Thank you very much, and thank you for taking care of my parents and my two brothers.
Is that a paid commercial or...
I had nothing to do with that.
I hope I'm not there, well soon.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else like the address? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Natalie Sidorunco, and I live at 687 Eastview Avenue, and before I lived at 778 Eastview Avenue, where my parents still live. So I've lived on the same street my entire life. It's not going to sound like I have a PhD in rhetoric, which I do, but I'm really nervous, so I'm just going to speak emotionally instead of intellectually tonight to say that despite what's happening with the ordinances, the city, township, city, I think one thing that we're not addressing is that children are losing green spaces in the world. We are losing the appreciation from nature by experiencing it directly, direct experience with nature. My kids grew up, I grew up playing in the farm, also, forget us, Green, and Jenny, and my children grew up feeding apples that were on our property over the fence, sometimes we would get in trouble, but we would feed, we would feed the cows, and it was wonderful. The point that I want to make is that the farm is an integral part of Wadsworth. People drive down the road and they love the farm. We're the only farm that looks like it's a farm in the city, right? We're the only farm left, where, see, I'm saying like it's mine, too, right? We're the only farm left in the city. And if there are lines adjacent to all four parts of the property, I don't understand why a charge can't be figured out with a proper fee to benefit the city and also allow the water use, because we are going to lose these green spaces. A park is not the same thing as a land, a growing farm where people can learn, where 4-H can come, where people can be good stewards of that land. Learn about beekeeping, learn about crop rotation. We love the Hanes, I grew up with that farm, it means so much to our community, and I feel like if we want to invest in the future generations of Wadsworth, we have to preserve these heritage farms and green spaces so that we can educate ourselves on how to live, should the grid go down, on how to live, should we don't have this modern life that we think that we're always going to have and take for granted. We need to be able to learn how to live with our neighbors, share resources, and keep farm life alive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have one, please come forward.
Yeah, I just want to walk up front, but I will. My name is Bill Simmons, I live at 404 Idlebrook Drive, that's in Briarthorn, which is on property adjacent to the Hane Farm. We've lived in Wadsworth for a long time, my wife's not here, so I can't ask her how long, but it's been a long time, and I've watched that farm be a farm from the day we moved to Wadsworth. Our children were raised here. Our daughter's almost as old as her mother and father by 24 years, actually 40, no, 24 years, and henceforth, she was a real little girl when we moved to Wadsworth, and now she's 60 years old. So we've all benefited from this Hane farm as far as a, an attractive view as we enter the city of Wadsworth on Akron Road. I'm totally in favor of it. I know that the city has the ability to make adjustments and changes in the ordinances that you have in place. It seems very difficult for me to understand why it wouldn't be an easy thing to do when it is completely surrounded by the city, it has city water running across the land. Why hang your hat on an ordinance that keeps someone from getting water in their, in their new home? I don't know what my water bill is, because my wife pays the bill, but the money they're going to pay for water is a plus to the city, and they're going to use their wells and their springs as much as they can, so they don't have to pay that water. So it's not like you're going to give away anything. You run a line, you tap into the one...
We ought to just go in there in the backfield there.
Seriously, I'm totally in favor. I support the Hane family, and I only know John, and we've had friendly conversation, but I fully support it, and I think the city should stop being difficult to deal with. I really mean that. You have that reputation, and I hope you can get over it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to, yes?
Jeff Malik, I live at 7960 Benita Road in the township of Wadsworth. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I guess I have some more questions that were developed here. I live in a township, and I pay for trash. I don't pay city taxes, so I don't need to, because I'm paying that bill. I would assume it's the same with water, so the mayor commented that it's unfair for the farm to not be annexed into the city and not pay that tax, but they're going to pay the water bill. They're not asking for a bunch of city services, they're just asking for water, which they're going to pay for. I guess my only other thought is, well, first of all, if there is an ordinance, and I have no reason to doubt that John talked to the person, and that ordinance was already broken, seems to me there's already been a precedent set. The second thing is, I guess I'm questioning if there is an ordinance and the mayor's administration can't grant the city to allow water to go to the farm, who does? Is that a city council thing? So it's just a question. If the city council can change that ordinance, especially if a precedent already been set, this shouldn't even be a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none, I'll move on with our, rest of our agenda. Is there any correspondence?
There's no correspondence.
Okay. I will pause if there's anybody that came to speak and wants to leave, now is the opportune time, or you can stay around, and we'll be happy to talk to anybody after our regular council meeting.
Couldn't hear in the audience?
Yeah, we're, we're in the process. Yeah, thanks for pointing that out. Thank you. She couldn't protect, yeah. All right, thank you, sir. Okay, the next item is committee and commission assignments. Move into public service committee, council member Stugmeyer.
The public service committee will next meet on Monday, December the 16th. That time has been changed from 5:30 to 4:30 PM, an hour earlier here in council chambers.
Okay. Public safety, council member Copley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next meeting of public safety committee will be on December the 11th at 6 o'clock PM here in council chambers.
Good. Public ways committee, council member Rosberg.
Yes, public ways will be meeting tomorrow evening here in council chambers at 5:00 PM.
Okay. Economic development planning committee, council member Yurchev.
Mr. President, economic development planning committee will be meeting tomorrow evening in council chambers at 6:00 PM.
Okay, very good. Committee the whole met tonight at many topics, most of it legislation, a nice presentation by our auditor. Airport commission, council member Stugmeyer.
The airport commission has a to-be-determined date right now, but we're shooting for one next April, but we don't have a date nailed down yet.
Not till when?
Originally next April, until something else comes up with the, the hangars. We might, we'll probably call a special meeting earlier.
Okay. Do you want to mention anything to the other members of council about what's going on with the airport?
Uh, we're going over the, the hangar situation out there right now with the condo association that was out there and what to do further on. There is some litigation at this point, I believe, going on, so we can't go into a lot of detail on that, but that's, other than some other repairs and normal maintenance that we, that we did talk about out there, the biggest thing is what will be done with the hangars out there in the future. The city owns the hangars, and then once the, once that commission was resolved, it's going to determine who, who runs those hangars and does the maintenance and everything else.
Okay, thank you. Stormwater commission, council member Copley.
Mr. President, there's no me-
Mr. President, there's no meeting scheduled right now for the stormwater commission.
Okay. Shade tree commissions, councilmember Hines.
Thank you, Mr. President. The shade tree commission will meet Tuesday, April twenty-second, at five o'clock here in council chambers.
Mm-hmm. And what do you have to report from the committee or commission? Any report?
No, no report as of now.
Um, the, did do quite a few plannings, uh, in the last couple of weeks.
Fall plantings.
Yeah.
Fall plantings.
They, they got that complete, and, uh, as of December first, I believe they'll start doing some of the tree trimming around town. Uh, planning commission, uh, they next meet Monday, uh, November twenty-fifth at seven PM in council chambers. Cemetery board, councilmember Yurichak.
Uh, cemetery board will next meet tomorrow, uh, at five PM in the conference room upstairs at City Hall.
Very good. Cable TV, V, uh, cable TV commission, councilmember Hanlon.
The cable TV commission will meet on Thursday, December fifth, at four o'clock in council chambers.
Good time. Do you have anything prior, from your prior meetings, any updates on?
Uh, not since I last reported.
Okay, thank you. And senior citizens commission, uh, councilmember Parrish.
Um, Mr. President, the senior citizen commission meets on Monday, twelve-two, at three-thirty at Suprema, and, uh, they have a drawing going on to help support the foundation for the senior citizens right now. Come off and come, and buy as many raffle tickets as you can. They'd appreciate that.
Okay. Um, next we have, uh, the reading of legislation.
Okay, we'll start with first readings tonight. This first one's a pretty long one. It's Resolution twenty-four dash twelve on first reading sponsored by councilmember John Yurichak and discuss it economic development and planning. A resolution pursuant to Division C of Section seven oh nine point oh two-three of the Ohio Revice Coast stating that what services the city of Wadsworth will provide and an approximate date by which it will provide them to the territory proposed for annexation by the petition of Alan B. Guren, Eric B. Vance, and Kathy D. Hayes, co-trustees of the Vance Family Irrevocable Trust for an expedited type-two annexation of sixty-one point four-four-five-zero acres from the township of Wadsworth to the city of Wadsworth upon annexation and stating that if said territory is annexed and becomes subject to zoning by the city of Wadsworth and the municipal zoning permits use, uses in the said territory that the city of Wadsworth determines are clearly incompatible under the uses permitted under current township zoning regulations and the adjacent land remaining within the township from which said territory was annexed. The legislative authority of the city of Wadsworth will require in the zoning ordinance remitting or permitting the incompatible uses the owner of the said annexed territory to provide a buffer separating the use of the said annexed territory and the adjacent land remaining within the township and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the three-reading rule on Resolution number twenty-four dash one-two.
Second.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
And Hines?
Yes.
Mr. President, I move to call the question on Resolution number twenty-four dash one-two.
Hearing no objection to councilperson Yurichak's, uh, proposal to call to question, will clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number twenty, uh, Resolution twenty-four dash twelve?
Yurichak?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
And Stugmeyer?
Yes.
And Hines?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-four dash twelve has been adopted.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash one-seven-five on first reading sponsored by councilmember Jeanie Hines and discuss it committee of the whole. An ordinance to amend Section thirty-five point three-one of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth to increase the compensation of the president of council, councilmembers, clerk of city council, beginning in calendar year twenty-twenty-six, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to move ordinance number twenty-four dash one-seven-five to second reading.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Ordinance twenty-four one-seven-five has been moved to second reading.
And we'll move to second readings. Ordinance number twenty-four dash one-five-eight on second reading sponsored by councilmember Dan Rosberg and discuss it committee of the whole. An ordinance to amend Section thirty-four point three-six of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth to provide for the allocation of income tax receipts of three million seven hundred seventy-nine thousand four hundred sixteen dollars during fiscal year twenty-twenty-four and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to place ordinance number twenty-four one-five-eight on third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance twenty-four one-fifty-eight has been moved to third reading.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash one-six-zero on second reading sponsored by councilmember Susan Hanlon and discuss it committee of the whole. An ordinance to make a supplemental appropriation of five thousand eight hundred dollars in the one-ten general fund for purposes other than personal services for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Mr. President, I move we place ordinance number twenty-four dash one-six-zero on third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number twenty-four dash one-sixty has been moved to third reading.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash one-six-three on second reading sponsored by councilmember Susan Hanlon and discuss it committee of the whole. An ordinance authorizing expenditures for gift cards to be presented to the annual employee recognition event to the city employees who in twenty-twenty-four reach service milestones of five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, and forty years of service and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move we suspend the three-reading rule for ordinance number twenty-four dash one-six-three.
Second.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
And Hines?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number twenty-four dash one-six-three.
Hearing no objection to councilmember Hanlon's proposal to call to question, will clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number twenty-four dash one-six-three?
Hanlon?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
And Hines?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash one-six-three has been adopted.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash one-six-four on second reading sponsored by councilmember David Parrish and discuss it committee of the whole. An ordinance to change the compensation rate for the volunteer fire service and EMS service employees and declaring an emergency.
Uh, Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance number twenty-four one-six-five on third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, yeah, Steve.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash one-six-five has been placed on third reading.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash one-six-six on second reading sponsored by councilmember David Parrish, discuss it committee of the whole. An ordinance to amend Section thirty-five point four-four and thirty-five point four-six of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth to increase the compensation for the clerk of the municipal court and for the chief probation officer and for the probation assistant and to declare an emergency.
Uh, Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance number twenty-four one-six-six on third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number twenty-four one-six-six has been placed on third reading.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash one-six-seven on second reading sponsored by councilmember Susan Hanlon and discuss it committee of the whole. An ordinance to increase the compensation for the assistant director of law beginning in calendar year twenty-twenty-five and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to amend ordinance number twenty-four dash one-six, one-six-seven, Section one, paragraph B, to say, "The director of law may appoint an assistant director of law to be compensated at the rate of eighty thousand dollars for the calendar year two thousand twenty-five and eighty-three thousand two hundred dollars for the calendar year two thousand twenty-six."
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. President, I move...
Wait, we have to...
Ordinance number twenty-four dash one-six-seven has been amended.
Now, I'm gonna read the amended ordinance number twenty-four dash one-six-seven. An ordinance to amend Section thirty-five point two-eight of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth to increase the compensation for the assistant director of law beginning in calendar year twenty-twenty-five and declaring an emergency. All right, did I just do that? Okay. And so, you can decide what you want to do.
Should we not read the amended one?
I just read the amended one.
Yeah.
Oh, she didn't read that? Okay. Here, the number one. Um, so I move that we place ordinance number...
Amended ordinance.
Amended ordinance number twenty-four dash one-six-seven on third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Amended ordinance number twenty-four dash one-six-seven has been placed on third reading.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash one-six-eight on second reading sponsored by councilmember David Parrish and discuss it committee of the whole. An ordinance to amend Section thirty-five point four-seven of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth to change the compensation schedule for various city officers and employees and to declare an emergency.
Uh, Mr. President, I hereby move to amend ordinance number twenty-four one-six-eight, the title to say, "An ordinance to amend Section thirty-five point four-seven of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth to change the compensation schedules for various city offer, official, officers and, officials and employees and to provide a five percent wage increase for the said various city officials and employees. It is in calendar year twenty-twenty-five and to declare an emergency. And Section two to say that the city officers and employees whose positions are contained within the salary grade schedule shall receive a five percent wage adjustment for calendar year twenty-twenty-five, effective on the pay period beginning on December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. And move the present, present, previous Section two to Section three, and to move previous Section three to Section four."
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance twenty-four dash one-six-eight has been amended.
Amended ordinance number twenty-four dash one-six-eight. An ordinance to amend Section thirty-five point four-seven of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth to change the compensation schedule for various city officers and employees and to provide a five percent wage increase for said various city officers and employees in calendar year twenty-twenty-five and to declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the three-reading rule on amended ordinance, ordinance twenty-four one-six-eight.
Second.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number twenty-four one-six-eight.
Hearing no objection to councilmember Parrish's proposal to call to question, will clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance, amended ordinance number twenty-four dash one-six-eight?
Hanlon?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Amended ordinance twenty-four one-six-eight has been adopted.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash one-six-nine on second reading sponsored by councilmember John Yurichak and discuss it economic development and planning. An ordinance to amend Section fifty-three point one-six, ninety-seven point one-five, one fifty-three point zero-five-zero, one fifty-three point zero-five-one, one fifty-three point zero-five-two, and one fifty-three point zero-five-three, and to delete Sections fifty-three point oh-two, ninety-seven point three-oh, ninety-seven point three-one, one fifty-three point zero-five-four, one fifty-three point zero-five-six, and one fifty-four point zero-seven-seven of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move we place ordinance number twenty-four dash one-seven-zero on third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number twenty-four dash one-seventy has been placed on third reading.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash one-seven-one on second reading sponsored by councilmember John Yurichak and discuss it economic development and planning. An ordinance to enact Chapter one fifty-eight of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance number twenty-four dash one-seven-one on third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number twenty-four dash one-seven-one has been placed on third reading.
And our last one is ordinance number twenty-four dash one-seven-two on second reading sponsored by councilmember John Yurichak and discuss it economic development and planning. An ordinance to establish impact fees for Chapter one fifty-eight of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance number twenty-four dash one-seven-two on third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number twenty-four dash one-seven-two has been placed on third reading. Any other business from the administration? Comments from council?
I would, this, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I would like to ask that the Hane Farm question be moved to the public service committee for further discussion so that we can get back to Mr. Hane with an answer.
Tom, you chair that?
Yes, that's fine.
Put it on the agenda?
We will do that.
And that'll be the December meeting?
The December meeting that has been changed from the five-thirty to the four-thirty time.
Okay.
And if you wanna come on that date, Mr. Hane, we won't want it.
The other thing, uh, this Friday evening is candlelight walk here in downtown Wadsworth from, uh, five-thirty until nine o'clock. All the amenities, the horse and carriage rides, a little train ride, the pedal bike will be down here, uh, barber shop quartet, all the things that we've had before, and so we're just hoping for good weather, but again, uh, everything down here is, is all free provided by Main Street, so come on down.
Any other comments, statements? Okay, all, uh, entertain emotion of a jerk?
So moved.
We are a jerk.
You are watching WCTV, Wadsworth Community Television.